All right. Is there any members of the public that would like to speak to the Planning Commission this evening on a non-agenda item? No? Okay, great. All right. Next order of business is the minutes from the May 8 Planning Commission meeting. Did everyone receive a copy of the minutes?
Yes.
And are there any corrections to the minutes?
I have some minutes with spelling errors, but since corrected, I believe.
Okay. All right. Any other corrections to the minutes? Okay. A motion to approve?
I move that we approve the minutes as amended.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries. All right. And this evening, we have a conditional use permit case file LU-00092024 for Diplomat Motors. And before we open the hearing for this agenda item, I would like to explain a little about the Planning Commission and the procedure we'll be following for the public hearing. The Planning Commission is an appointed seven-member volunteer body of Troutdale citizens. Members of the Planning Commission are Troutdale residents who have been appointed by the city council. They serve four-year terms. They are strictly volunteers and receive no pay for their services. The Planning Commission is an appointed, seven-member volunteer body of Troutdale citizens, and serves as a citizen committee for the review of land use applications and various land use-related matters within the city. Items which the Planning Commission consider include uses of land, subdivisions, major variances, land use policy plans, and development regulations. For some land use applications, the Planning Commission makes a final decision. For other land use applications, they are simply making a recommendation to the city council, who renders the final decision. Tonight's application is a conditional use permit, and the procedures will be contained to quasi-judicial public hearings are held in accordance with Oregon law procedures contained in the Troutdale Development Code. The Planning Commission will be the deciding body for this application this evening. The hearing proceeds as follows. City staff presents their report, which includes applicable criteria and standards for the matter under consideration in the land use application. All testimony and evidence should be directed towards these criteria. If you believe that other criteria in the comprehensive plan, development code, or other city land use regulations apply, you must identify these criteria and explain why they apply to the decision. Planning Commission accepts public testimony relating to the application. The applicant is allowed to speak first, followed by proponents, then by opponents, then by any parties neutral to the application. An opportunity will be provided to anyone testifying to clarify any issues raised. All issues raised by a participant during the public hearing must be sufficiently clear and specific to allow the Planning Commission and other parties an opportunity to respond to those issues. Failure to raise an issue during this public hearing may invalidate a future appeal based on that issue. Prior to closing the public hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission must grant the request either by continuing the public hearing to a future date, or by leaving the record open for at least seven days to admit only that specific additional written evidence or testimony. If the record is left open for the additional written evidence or testimony, any participant may file a written request for an opportunity to respond to new evidence submitted during the period the record was left open. If such a request is filed, the Planning Commission shall reopen the record to allow any person to raise new issues which relate to the new evidence, testimony, or criteria for decision-making. And for tonight's application, we will be looking at Chapter 1, Chapter 2, Chapter 3, Chapter 6, Chapter 9, Chapter 17. And before we open the public hearing, is there any Planning Commission members other than driving by the site that have any expertise, communication, or bias to declare? No? No, 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 no? No? Okay. And as a final note, these proceedings are recorded, and please speak clearly into the microphone for the record at the time that you can, and you must come forward to the table to speak. Okay. And at this time, I'd like to open case file LU-00092024, conditional use permit for Diplomat Motors. Ms. Pullman.
I am going to turn this over to Nick Armstead, our assistant planner.
All right. Good evening, Commission. Nick, the assistant planner. This is Dakota's application, but he is out, so I'm doing the presentation while he's away. So this is LU-00092024, conditional use permit for Diplomat Motors. Some site background information, the applicant is Joseph Trechuk. Is that address? Yeah, nice. It is at 3265 Southwest Sundial Avenue. It is Zone General Commercial, or GC. It is adjacent to the north, MDR, Medium Density Residential; to the east, General Commercial; to the south, is City of Gresham; and to the west, is General Commercial and Medium Density Residential. Here's what the site looks like if you haven't seen it before. Here's the site plan. Nothing's changing on the site from what it once was. So what is being requested? A conditional use permit to operate a used car dealership where the applicant will be repairing and selling pre-owned vehicles located within an existing space in the GC zone. What is not being requested is a zoning change or any exterior modifications. Applicable criteria: Chapter 1, Chapter 2, 3.312, 6.300, Chapter 9, Chapter 17, any applicable building and fire codes, construction standards for public works facilities, and any relevant ORSs. We are here, so obviously this means it's a type III quasi-judicial procedure. It's a public hearing. Planning Commission is the decision-making entity for a type III application. If there is an appeal, this application will go to city council. The timeline of events: May 6, the applicant submitted application materials. May 14, the application has been deemed complete. May 21, notice of public hearing was sent. June 12, today is the public hearing. If approved, the applicant's business license can be approved, and they can move into the space of any relevant building permits, or applying for any relevant building permits. We sent out a notification of hearing, so we could leave comments or reached out to for comments, planning, Public Works and Building, and Gresham Fire and Emergency Services, as well as Multnomah County Transportation Planning. No public comments were received. All reviewing entities responded in a way that suggested that approval can be issued with conditions of approval. Decision criteria A: The use is listed as a conditional use in the underlying district or approved by the Planning Commission as similar to conditional uses listed in the underlying district. The finding is the subject property is located within the GC zone. Vehicular and equipment services, sales or rentals are listed as a conditional use within the GC zoning district. As such, this criterion is met. Criteria B: The characteristics of the site are suitable for the proposed use considering size, shape, location, topography, existence of improvements, and natural features. The finding: The characteristics of the site are suitable for the proposed use of used car dealership. The site had previously been a recreational vehicle dealership, which also falls under the vehicular and equipment services, sales or rentals use. The 15,632 square foot, one-story space will adequately accommodate both office and inventory for the proposed used car dealership. The proposed dealership will be located within an existing structure adjacent to the Honda dealership to the east. There are no concerns to the topography or natural features of the site. Therefore, the use of the site is suitable for a used car dealership of its size. As such, this criterion is met. Criteria C: All transportation systems, public facilities, and public services related to the proposed development have, or can be improved to have, adequate capacity to serve the proposed development at the time of its completion. Finding: All transportation systems, public facilities, and public services currently exist on-site and have adequate capacity to serve the proposed used car dealership. The site had previously received conditional use approval for a car dealership, case file 96049 and 96, and is an RV dealership, case file 18018 and 2018, and is specifically designed for automotive sale and ample parking for inventory in the northern portion of the lot. The site has access to Triment Bus Route 20, which has a stop located at the south end of the property off southeast Stark. No new access points or utility modifications are proposed with this application. As such, this criterion is met. Criteria D: The proposed use will provide adequate open space landscaping and aesthetic design to mitigate any possible adverse effect on surrounding properties and uses. The finding: The property is already developed and meets both parking and landscaping requirements. The applicant is not proposing any changes to the existing landscaping. Auto sales within the general commercial zone require a parking minimum of one parking space for 1,000 square feet of gross floor area, and a maximum of two spaces for 1,000 square feet. The minimum required parking is 16 spaces. The site currently has 28 available parking spaces, medium is requirement. The required minimum number of short-term bicycle parking spaces shall be one. The required minimum number of long-term bicycle parking spaces shall be one. Bicycle parking shall be located on-site, convenient to building entrances, and have direct access to both the public right-of-way and the main entrance of the principal use. As such, this criterion is conditionally met. And criteria E: The proposed use as conditioned will not cause or not result in the creation of a public nuisance, including but not limited to air, land, or water degradation, noise, glare, heat, vibration, or other impacts that may be injurious to public health, safety, and welfare. The proposed use will not cause or result in the creation of a public nuisance that may be injurious to public health, safety, and welfare. The surrounding properties to the east and west are Zone General Commercial, and the site is located on Stark Street, a busy area. The property to the north is Zoned MDR. However, this site has been occupied by a car dealership for the past 20 years, and the properties are accustomed to this type of business. As such, this criterion is met. And criteria F: The proposal satisfies the applicable provisions of this code. Finding: This proposal satisfies the applicable provisions of the code. As such, this criterion is met. Staff recommends approval with conditions, as outlined in the findings effect. Planning has the following conditions of approval. Applicant shall be required to satisfy the comments made by review entities, including in the corresponding staff report, or shall work with staff to reach an agreement between the parties. Number two: The approval of case file LU-00052024 shall expire automatically two years from the effective date of the decision unless the approval is enacted, either through construction, establishment of use, or repertation of plat or survey within the specified time period. The effective date of the decision shall be the date of the notice of decision unless such decision is appealed. Three: Upon final inspection for the certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall be required to show compliance with the design and location standards for short-term and long-term bike parking, as found in Troutdale Development Code, Section 9.080. That's what I have for you.
Questions for staff?
I have one.
Yes. Ms. Pullman.
Thank you. I don't see anything discussed regarding the condition, age, and condition of the existing building. Is there any requirement to do any kind of safety study or inspection of that existing building?
If they're making no changes, because the previous use was the same use, I don't believe so. If they plan on making any modifications, then that would trigger, you know, building requirements.
Okay. But just moving into an existing building that may require retrofitting or something because of age?
Yeah, they can do it as-is if they're making no changes.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Wouldn't they have a building inspection that was part of the certificate of occupancy?
Yeah, it'll be...
Yes. So as part of getting their certificate of occupancy, they will get a building inspection. If they plan on, you know, making any modifications, you know, to the interior, we do look at fire, life, and safety. So there will be some sort of building inspection.
Yeah. Okay.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes, I have a couple of comments, questions on paragraph D. A through C are criterion is met. D is say criterion is conditionally met.
Yeah.
What are the unmet conditions?
So that's related to bike parking. The plans don't show any bike parking on-site. Bike parking is provided or required as a percentage of provided parking. So based on the amount of spaces they have, that triggers one short-term and one long-term bicycle parking space. So in the conditions of approval, we have number three, applicant shall be required to show compliance with our standards of short- and long-term bicycle parking.
Okay. But as you know, I requested the Blue Dog application. You were also required to provide the two bicycle parking spaces. Did those go away when they left?
They must have.
So, okay, so, okay.
Yeah, we did.
My other question is related to parking. Say, it calls for 16 customer parking spaces based on the size of the building. There are some used car dealerships that all they have is a portable office building. So if this, in a case like that, if they had, if that's all the dealership had, would only one space, one customer parking space be required? If that's the standard?
If they had a smaller office space?
Yeah, if the building, the building was only 800 square feet, they'd only have to have one parking space?
Yeah, that would be the requirement, but if they'd want to provide more, they'd be welcome to.
Okay. Because I know there's no street parking on Sundial. So the only other question is, says the site currently has 28 available parking spaces. So 16 of those would be allocated for customers. The 28 sounds awfully small for that amount of area. So that only leaves them 14 spaces for their cars, their cars that are for sale. Is the, you know, the lot, the lot is, the lot is their sales floor, basically. There aren't going to be many for-sale cars inside the building.
These, the number of spaces being referred to in this section would be actually like painted-out parking lot spaces where customers would be permitted to park. And that could be different than areas where you'd store a car for purchase, because it's not necessarily parking. It's kind of being stored on-site as inventory. So it's slightly different requirements in the sense that a parking requirement wouldn't go toward their inventory of vehicles.
Okay. Let's see. The other question I had is the only, I think there are two access driveways on Sundial. No access all-star. Correct?
Yeah, that's, I know, because I drive by, there's two, there's one.
That's correct.
One behind the building, one in, one in the front of the building, so that's it.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have for now.
Commissioner Allen?
So the City of Troutdale Public Works requirements seem kind of open-ended. I was wondering if there's going to be a process, or if the applicant has already been told if there really are going to be any improvements that are necessary, so they know what to expect?
Yeah, I, I don't know if Dakota's communicated that with you. Typically, those conditions are communicated after decisions made, as like a staff report that goes to the applicant. There are a few Public Works comments and a condition. Let's see if they're in here.
Well, the conditions are any defects in the public sidewalk.
Yeah, if any, or...
Yeah, and then making the approach to ADA standards.
Mm-hmm.
Those are the only ones that they call out.
And those are pretty standard?
Yeah.
Somewhat, they could be somewhat subjective, though, other than the ADA part of it. So...
Yeah, I'm, to follow up on that, this is Kevin Minkoff. I, too, wonder what is the process of identifying that in fact, public sidewalk defects exist, or that ADA improvements are required?
That is, Public Works makes an assessment of it, and they determine what needs to be repaired, or replaced, or left alone, and that's where that goes.
Right. Well, it's just as long as related to, no, early on, right?
Yeah. And a couple of things. I did run off a copy of the decision for Blue Dog RV that we did back in 2018, and then we did one in 1996, as staff pointed out. And I know this is de novo hearing, but we've been down this trail before for basically the same uses. Just one comment about the bike parking. It's got to be like for the employee, because would you ride a bike when you're going to go buy a car?
Sure.
Or you buy a car and then put the bike in the trunk, and go, I don't know, it just doesn't seem like there'd be a lot of bike riding to a car dealership. That's just...
Unless they're buying an SUV, they throw it in the back.
They could, but it just seems weird that, I don't know.
I don't know.
You sell bike racks with your cars?
We should.
Okay. At this time, we would ask the applicant to come forward, please.
Hello?
Hi. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Joseph Trecheck, and address is going to be 601 Northeast Province Court, Camus, Washington, 98607.
Okay. Is there anything you want to tell us?
Thank you for being here. Thank you for volunteering your time and loving the city well. As you know, we want to sell cars, and in the process, we also want to make a positive impact in our city, and to those that we sell to, and those that we work with. So we would love the opportunity to continue to do business in Troutdale.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
Yes, actually, two. This is Kevin Minkoff. Continue to do business. Where are you doing business currently?
Also Troutdale.
Where?
Oh, across from the airport, the Troutdale Airport, in that, in that I-84 complex.
Business park?
Yeah, yeah, in the business park.
Is it also a...
Corporate rental.
Right.
Yeah.
Is it also a car dealership?
Yeah.
So this is going to be an expansion of the same business?
We're going to move. We're going to move our business there. More space, better opportunity.
Okay.
That's the desire.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions? Yeah? No? Okay. Commissioner Wilcox?
Is there going to be a repair shop in the building?
Yes, for just the mechanical side.
Okay. Thank you.
Sweet.
Thank you. All right. Anyone wishing to testify as a proponent to the application? Come forward, sir.
Hi. Hi. I'm Alan Webb. I'm owner of the building, and...
Your address.
A little closer.
Your address.
15511 Southeast Evergreen Highway in Vancouver.
Okay.
And in, I'm the original developer of the property, and my dad and I built the building in 96, opened up for business in 97 as a Saturn dealership. I don't know how many of you were around back then. We were the, the property at that point in time was all farm, farm and Moncoco family owned the property, and there was nobody to the east of us at all. Honda store wasn't there, Home Depot wasn't there, the shopping center wasn't there, you know, on the corner of 257th. All the neighbors behind us weren't there, the school wasn't there. We were first. And the mayor came to our city, our opening, and he was the gray-haired guy back then. Now I'm the gray-haired guy. So times have changed a bit in 27 years. So the building's been vacant a couple of times, you know, over the years. Saturn closed, I tried to close the store in '09. We've rented two, we have the Nissan store in there, and then Blue Dog RV. So it's a unique site. It's set up for a car dealership. It's not set up for, you know, other retail businesses. It just doesn't blend itself well with all that parking. So with that, the site being vacant a couple of times, you know, we've had to, you know, and you don't fill a property like that right away with a tenant. It just doesn't happen. You have to, it's a unique situation. So this time, unfortunately, you know, we, a vacant commercial building is a magnet for the homeless folks. And, you know, when I first had it vacant, we had a fair amount of homeless folks set up camp there, steel power, I mean, try to break into the building, you know, graffiti, the list goes on, drug paraphernalia, so on and so forth, lots of shopping carts from Home Depot. And, you know, so I found out real quickly that, you know, we couldn't move them out of there. I mean, you know, we talked to these folks, and they wouldn't move. And so the recourse that we had was to go online and file a report with the county to have them come, move them out of there, which took about a week. So I quickly learned that we had to have, you know, security there, you know, patrolling the building nightly and removing the homeless folks. So that's been a bit of a challenge. I mean, we all know the state of society now. It's a bit different, and so, you know, we've incurred that cost. And, you know, I've had the neighbors respond to recently, there was a guy out there that I assume took some foam material that was cohesive with water from Home Depot, started spreading it all over a lot, and out in the street, it was difficult to get off. That was the latest. One of the neighbors called us and alerted us to the fact. So I think, you know, having a tenant in there would be good for the community, no doubt about it. I mean, we're right across the street from the hospital. I mean, they'd probably like it. I know the neighbors would like it. I know the Honda store would like it. I know Home Depot would like it, because we've returned a ton of their shopping carts to them. So, you know, I know there's no such thing as a slam dunk, but, you know, does anybody have any questions for me? As far as the building goes, it's a great building. It's a tilt-up concrete building, and for any of you that know about construction, block and tilt-up concrete are about as bulletproof as you can get when it comes to, you know, damage, you know, fire, any, anything. I mean, they're just, they're just good buildings. So, you know, the building's well taken care of, and I think Joseph will attest to that. He's going in there, doing some TLC to some things, and, you know, bringing it up to speed with, you know, some of his look to it, and I think it'll be a welcome addition to the community, a vibrant business that's well needed in the community. Yeah?
I have a question.
Sure.
Kevin Minkoff, again. I wondered, did Blue Dog...
And I think it'll be a welcome addition to the community, a vibrant business that's well needed in the community. Yeah.
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
Kevin Minkoff, again. I wondered, did Blue Dog RV and the Saturn dealership, did they do mechanical repairs as part of their operation?
So I, I had the Saturn store there for 12 years until Saturn went out of business in '09. And yeah, we had a mechanic, complete mechanical shop, just like any other car dealership.
So there's proper, what I'm getting at, there's proper hazardous material waste disposal?
So there's a oil-water separator on site because we do, we've got two stalls there for, you know, car detailing, and that has to be emptied of the solid waste per, you know, a properly approved environmental company that disposes of that. So yeah, I, I own some other dealerships in Vancouver and, you know, this is not my first rodeo. I've built five stores. I, I've heavily renovated three, so, you know, I've been in the car business pretty much most of my life.
So there wouldn't need to be any modifications for that purpose?
Nope. Nope. So, yeah, we're not, we're not doing any bodywork in there as far as, I don't know.
Maybe you do.
Little light stuff like sanding or something like that, but yeah.
But I'm just thinking oil changes and.
Oh, yeah. You bet. Yeah, you bet. And that's why you have the oil-water separator. Yeah.
Okay.
Good question. Anybody else?
I have one comment that's not related to the application, and that is landscaping.
Sure. I don't know what your comment.
Sometimes it's our curb appeal there's a little less than.
Well, you're welcome to drive by the site right now.
No, I mean.
It's, it's well taken care of. I mean, we have lawn service that comes in weekly, you know.
Yeah, and I don't know if you've gotten a new one, but I'm just seeing the, you know, sometimes it's not.
Well, we have watered the grass when we have been there in the summertime, so, you know, but we have a full-blown sprinkler system and everything works on. So the nice row of trees down the street, you know, that we're responsible for.
It's a nice sight.
So with a tenant, it'll look a lot nicer.
Yeah, I mean, you know, he'll, he'll dress it up a little bit, I'm sure, you know, have some flowers, make it look, you know, homey and welcome to customers. It's just good business. Yeah.
Thank you.
You bet. Anybody else? Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak as a proponent to the application? Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent to the application? Any neutral parties wishing to speak this evening? Okay. I don't have anybody on.
Sandy?
Sandy can't. Motion to close.
Oh, I moved that report to public hearing.
So Zach, a second.
Okay, we have a motion to second close of public hearing. All those signified or saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed. All right. We need to do conditions and finding fact and final order.
Hey, Joseph says if anything, you need a new car or used car.
We're, we're not quite done yet.
Okay. So we'll stick around a little longer.
Yeah, stick around for a few more minutes.
Well, he meant to interject that at this point.
Good salesperson always has to ask.
Yeah.
Conditions first. Yeah. All right, let's do conditions first.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Prickett.
I move that we do the conditions of approval for case file. LU-009-2024 Diplomat Motors, condition of use.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for case file LU-0009-2024 Diplomat Motors for conditions of approval as submitted. Any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Wilcox?
I just wanted to be clear on the bicycle parking requirements. Is it one covered and one uncovered?
Yeah, so long-term parking is gonna be generally something covered. It can also be space inside of the building. They designated in the site plan that this area will be for like longer-term parking. Then short-term parking would be what you think of as a traditional bike rack somewhere outside.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on the motion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Okay, Commissioner Minkoff.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Chair Stephenson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Prickett, yes.
Okay, that passes. All right. Finding a fact and final order or?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the final, finding the fact and final order for case file LU-009-2024 Diplomat Motors.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for finding a fact and final order for case file LU-0009-2024 Diplomat Motors as submitted. Any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Allen?
I was actually happy to see this come forward. It seemed like a really good match.
Yeah.
So I think it's positive.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Minkoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Chair Stephenson?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Prickett?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Okay, congratulations. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
New car, you need a new car. And Chevy Nissan Mazda.
I'm a Tesla guy, I'm good, thank you.
Tesla guy.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, good luck.
And, oh, boy.
Good evening.
Yes, good evening, good evening, commissioners. So I'm here tonight to talk, to give you an update and to have a discussion about the climate-friendly equitable communities work. Just a little bit about where we have been and where we're going. We had a brief introduction about the, the climate-friendly equitable community rules in February. We had Evan Mannville from VLCD come present to the commission in March. And then in April, we kind of went over the three different options, which I'll show here in just a minute. And the commission, we decided that I was gonna do some outreach within the community and do some analysis and come back during this meeting in June to present you that information. So first, I want to just go over briefly the three options that we'll need to come to some sort of conclusion on in the future. So because these options are gonna define how we move forward with development for changes. So the first option within the climate-friendly equitable rules, CIPAC rules, is option one, and that is to repeal parking mandates in the city. So we wouldn't have any parking minimums per se, but we would have parking maximums. The second option is the fair policies option, and the city would need to implement two out of these five options, but one of the two options we pick have to be from the first three sections there. So parking would need to be rented separate from units, so that's gonna be unbundling from residential units, or we're gonna be unbundling from commercial units. Or there is this flexible commute benefits, and that would apply to employers that employ 50 or more employees, and they would need to supply a $50 stipend to them every month if they use some sort of alternative transportation, such as.
That include van?
Public, that does include carpool, you know.
Carpooling.
Carpooling, rideshare, public transit, biking and walking.
And that's paid by the employer?
That is, that is paid by the employer. And I'm gonna, we sent out a questionnaire to all the businesses here in Troutdale who employ 50 or more people. We had 17 employer, we had 17 employers on our business license list that met that criteria. One company has moved out of Troutdale, so that drops us down to 16. And out of those 16 businesses, I've heard back from five, and out of those five, only one company has one employee that rides public transit on a daily basis. I'm gonna do a little more outreach to the 10 folks that I haven't heard from about their employees and if they use public transit or not and how many over the next couple of weeks. We sent a questionnaire via mail, and then we also sent the same questionnaire via email because we have everybody's email addresses from our business licensing list.
So I'm a little confused, excuse me. The flexible, what we're talking about now, the idea is that if the employer provides free parking, they also then have to pay the employee $50 a month?
If that.
To park there?
No. If they would pay an employee that rides public transit, walks bikes, or takes some sort of rideshare to work, so that employee would not utilize the parking space.
Okay, and they have to offer that to every single employee?
No, only those employees that ride public transit on a daily basis or use some other alternative mode of transportation on a daily basis.
So if nobody, no employees use public transportation, they get to park free and the employer doesn't have to pay anything extra, which is the way it is right now.
I see.
For those employers that have lots of parking and so, okay.
Correct.
One more question, okay, and I got it.
Yep.
One more question, when you said that we have to pick one from the first three?
Yes.
So, so since we have to pick two, we pick one from the first three and then one from four or five?
Correct.
At least, we can do more than that, but at least.
Slowly roll.
What?
It's not necessarily, that is correct.
At least.
It's not necessarily a good move when it comes to restricting anything by any means, but yeah.
I agree.
Okay.
But I'm just trying to dial in on what's, what we're being asked to do.
Sure.
Thank you.
And we, we, we talked about tax on a parking, you know, on a, on a parking lot. Within, on a commercial parking lot here in Troutdale, we don't have any commercial parking lots at the moment that people pay for parking. When we talked to VLCD, we asked if we could, you know, come up with a program that would institute that for some time in the future and if that would check the box, and they said yes. And then we have option three here, which, you know, really talks about, you know, no mandates for kind of, kind of a list of uses. Some of these lists of uses, we have to, we have to reduce parking anyway per what's in the OAR or CPAC, such as studios and one bedroom apartments that are 750 square feet or less, we can't require parking. But with this option, we would also need to include some kind of unbundling option too for residential uses. Yes, Kevin?
Got another question.
Commissioner Minkoff?
What is the difference between option one, repeal parking mandates, and option three, no parking mandates?
No parking mandates for some of these things where repealing it is all of them.
Right.
So repealing means there is no parking minimum for anything.
Okay, but then no mandates just for these ones listed?
Right.
So I have to go look up, for example, what other?
Uses.
Uses don't fall under this particular list? You?
So when we talk about, when we talk about option one, I told, I told the planning commission last month that we could take a look at vacant parcels in the city and how option one may or may affect those parcels. So we created a map, and this map doesn't tell the whole story because our GIS system hasn't been updated yet. It takes a couple, it takes a couple months for our GIS system to get updated because we get our data through, through Metro. So some of the parcels on here that are classified as vacant, we know that they're in the process of being developed, developed, such as the Homphorward site and the, I think the food cart site is listed as vacant as well. But you can see here, these are the sites that are vacant within the Troutdale community. The green lots, those are open spaces, so you can kind of top those sides.
Yes, okay.
But the, the primary, like the bigger lots that are undeveloped, we have the lot just north of Edgefield, there along Halsey, we have the 20-acre Confluence site, that's in the city's urban renewal area. We have a couple of properties on the backside of, sure, on, on the north side of Halsey. So you have that, the corner piece at 257th and Halsey. And then there are some vacant sites up in the drift area, the Troutdale Reynolds Industrial Area that are owned by the port. So other than those, I mean, there's, there's not a lot of vacant parcels south of Halsey within the community. There's one just south of the Shell Station.
And this is for the purpose of parking lots?
So this is the person, this is for the purpose of just giving us an idea, we repeal parking, what would have the most effect on parcels? So those parcels would be the parcels that are vacant because those parcels wouldn't be required to have parking if they didn't want to put in parking for their use.
Are you talking about the lots behind the Shell Station?
I think it's just.
It's to the north.
It's just to the north.
Right. It's not very popular.
It's not.
Quick question. I mean, I know it's a little outlandish given the design requirements and everything, but technically, if the URA is then developed, would it fall into that jurisdiction where like technically we wouldn't be able to mandate any parking because it's been vacant? Or is that only have to do with vacant structures? Because a lot of these lots are just fields and everything we can mention, so I guess it's.
So it would apply the URA site, there's, I'm gonna get to this map actually right now because I think you bring up a good point. So one of the other administrative rules in the CPAC code states that the city can't mandate parking within. that the city can't mandate parking within a half mile walk or I want to say half mile a crow flies from a frequent transit bus route. We have one frequent transit bus route within Troutdale and that is Route seventy seven. And this map that I am showing right now um shows the tax lots that are within a half mile walk. Those are in pink. And then we have the lots that are actually within a half mile buffer of where the crow flies. So the state has given us an option on what to pick here.
But that's that's only a concern with option three.
So this is this does actually this doesn't apply to any of the options. I'm gonna get to this point here in just a second.
Okay, yeah.
So the city, we have we would choose with this map, do we want to adopt no parking mandates within a half mile walk? Or do we want to adopt no mandates for half a half mile buffer?
As the crow flies.
As the crow flies. Previously, I talked about this map. What would have the less impact would be those parcels that are within the half mile walk, those parcels in
Because crow flies quite a I mean it's not a direct I mean it's like cut through, it's not like along a line.
Correct, that's correct.
So that could make it a little more.
In other words, it expands from a half mile to something further because of the all of the
Because the crow flies doesn't fly in a direct down a down a street and takes the next quarter.
Mm-hmm. And when we look at the U R A site, the Confluence site, that site actually falls within um the half the half miles walk and within the half mile buffer. So when that site comes in for development, developers would have you know they have they're gonna have an option of
Sure.
how many parking spaces they provide for the uses that are developed in that area.
And this is true no matter what we choose?
Correct, doesn't it?
Well then what's the point? Well then what's the point?
Well you
Well
Yeah. Well, no, it sounded like there's still a choice, they're in there. We because you you started by saying we have to choose whether we no mandates for a half mile around public transportation route or what was the or?
The or was as as the crow flies, yeah, as the crow flies.
So it's it's the pink or the yellow?
Correct. But the pink also is yellow underneath. Because that's also as the crow flies.
What? Yes, of course, of course.
Okay.
Right, so
So do you want you want to narrow the scope or widen the scope?
I'd say the crow would be widening and the walk would be narrowing the scope.
And that would be less impact on the citizens.
Yeah, unless we can count when the crow lands to eat on the carcass of a squirrel that just got right over.
Yeah, in in your neighborhood, next to a bus stop.
And the conclusion of this picking one or the other is that the parking mandates have will be eliminated in either of those
Areas.
Areas.
Correct.
Eliminated.
Completely.
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 So and we would do that why?
Yeah.
Because the state mandates it.
I understand that.
That's why, there's no other good reason.
You need a you need a new state.
We wouldn't we wouldn't do that, are you kidding? Trying to walk up two fifty seventh in the winter in ice conditions, but they're requiring us to say sorry potentially.
Well, but my my question is if they're gonna require this, you know, half mile buffer. Maybe they might want to think about making the bus stops that are enclosed facing west instead of east. Because or enclose it because in Sandy they have them enclosed, so you're out of the weather. If you expect a person that like me, I walk a lot and I could walk that, that wouldn't be that hard. But I'm not gonna wait for a bus on a little seat thing when the wind's blowing thirty miles an hour and it's twenty-two degrees out. I mean and you you have to wait for that bus forever because it doesn't come like every fifteen minutes. So you're a popsicle by the time the bus gets there and they have to thaw you out because you're in the bus, sorry, I'm joking.
So what does that mean for existing parking? Is there there's no change to existing parking spots, it's just any new construction?
It has the option.
Has the option to put in parking or not?
Correct.
In that pink area.
Or option two you said, which is choosing, this is separate, so.
So this yeah, this is completely separate from the three options.
Right.
Oh, this is this is no matter what.
And this is
This is no matter what.
This is no
Then why do we have the I guess why do we have the options?
Well, because we're we're talking about all the rest of Troutdale.
Well, because it's not your entire city unless they have more lines which they can do.
Well, I mean, it's all the rest of this, not just this little strip. This little strip is one issue, but then we're talking about the entire rest of Troutdale has to follow one of these options.
Well, let's get back to our main question that I posed uh earlier this year. What what's going to have the least amount of impact to Troutdale residents?
Option two.
So if if it's an asterisk, if Tri-Bet if Tri-Bet expands their routes, you could theoretically have everywhere in Troutdale within a half a mile of a bus route.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well.
So there would be no parking mandate anywhere.
Well, there is a there is a bus on Stark Street.
But there's nothing we can do about that.
Okay, my my question regarding the map.
Because
What about the bus that runs down Stark? Shh, aren't the rest of these within half a mile of that?
There's no there's no bus. We don't have a bus that runs down Stark.
This is what we have looked at, the only frequent bus route is line seventy seven in Troutdale.
Those, right, Stark Street is I think part of Multnomah County, but not part of the city of Troutdale. I think they're outside that.
Well, it did well, I've taken that bus route um with a bus pass and it's not that frequent. It does shut down, so you better get home in time.
I think seventy seven shuts down too though, doesn't it not?
It runs later just because it's according to
I guess technically is that just then considered aggression because it's literally on the boundary there?
Yeah, right.
I mean, this is the boundary line for it.
It is, but I guess my question is, does the half mile buffer not recognize
Right.
Cities?
Cities?
City boundaries.
Yes.
It does.
Okay, so that that that's why Stark Street isn't in it.
It comes down Stark and then it's up Troutdale Road.
And what about
No, that's bus twenty goes down Stark, it goes to college.
It is it is twenty, right.
What about the bus lanes and an eighty that goes on Troutdale Road?
That is not considered frequent transit service, so the only bus line that is considered frequent
Fre- frequent is home.
Transit service is line seventy seven.
Good.
Okay.
But there you know it's not.
Um I think it's important to point out that um well, I'm no spring chicken, right? It's hard for me to other than a home or a residential area, it's hard for me to go to places I've lived as a kid and find buildings that still exist.
Why?
So this isn't just new construction.
It's gonna be
Reconstruction. And you'll see that in your retail and your commercial spaces and so forth. Those have a tendency to be reconstructed more than homes do. And so eventually over time, it will eat away your parking.
And it's correct.
The commercial
Yeah.
Restriction.
Commercial residential, commercial retail.
Now who who does the renting? So we say there's no longer parking must be rented separate from from units commercial, let's say. Parking rented separate. The employer rents must then rent and must collect rent from employees?
No.
No.
No, it's uh so like for the car dealership, for example, would be the gentleman who owned the building would basically be charging his tenant for those spots that he would be utilizing for his staff and customers, so.
And how do we enforce that and what amount are they supposed to charge for rent?
So the minimum
That's a good question.
The minimum is actually set in the O A R at fifty dollars.
A a spate a space per month?
A space.
And it says residential, what does that does that include like multifamily?
Yes, so that would be multifamily um. So it's for for example, I'm just gonna take for Eagle Eagle Ridge.
Eagle Ridge.
So the folks that live in Eagle Ridge would have to then pay for their parking spot as part of their rental lease agreement.
So and so if you don't want to pay for it, you just park on the street.
And if you don't want to pay for it, correct.
Well, okay, clarification, option two, number three. Um the way I'm reading it here, and I know this is not complete, that um if a person's commuting, they can get fifty dollars a month or more from the employer, right?
Right.
Yes.
But it says if parking is free at the employer, how much does the employer have to charge not to have to do this?
None of the employers charge their employees for parking within Troutdale.
Right.
I know, but if they wanted to, how much would they have to in order not to pay the fifty dollars a month?
I think they'd rather pay the fifty dollars a month.
Right.
Because there's so fewer.
Yeah.
You contain public transportation.
Out of pocket, it wouldn't be, they wouldn't.
That's why I think number three is probably the best option.
Three, three to me is a great option, one and two are both problematic.
Right, because you have to have a way to
I I would say one thing, if you really want to get rid of some of your commercial businesses, just fire in number two.
Yeah.
That'll do it for a lot of them.
For sure.
The economy killer.
I mean, that that is really gonna be hard for somebody to live with.
Right.
Well, and number five doesn't make sense, point five, who has point five cars?
Yeah, I have to
Back of car.
Now, a tax on parking lot revenue
Which
is so that would have to be a commercial parking lot
Right.
run by a commercial vendor.
Or the city.
And then
Or the city.
Or the city, and then the state would chart, what is the tax rate?
That's not our problem.
Well, it is if we're choosing around to implement.
So the tax on the parking lot revenue, I would have to get back to you, I think there is a a minimum
Mm-hmm.
um within the O A R and I I for the life of me, I've read so many pages of C P A C, I can't remember it off the top of my head.
If I may, what is the tax and where does it come?
So it goes back to the city, comes back to the city.
It goes back to the city.
The city collects it, right?
The city collects it and the city actually goes into a pot that would be used for alternative transportation improvements throughout the city.
Commissioner answers.
Thank you, Chair, that I guess that was my that's my question. Um as far as I was aware, it was only commercial, so this is including city lots as well?
It could if the if the city is paying, if the city has a lot and
Right, and then we're charging and then we're collecting a tax revenue on it to ourselves.
They're charging for parking.
Right.
That we would be reusing, okay, so up to this point, I know we'd said there isn't anything in place, but there has been talks about uh getting a system in place for Glen Auto Park for parking that would be essentially city run.
That's what this would be for.
So that would essentially be a revenue stream that we would have to charge a tax on.
Yeah.
But it
Ten percent.
Thank you, you kind of have any
There it is.
There it is.
Ten tax of a minimum of ten percent of revenues dedicated to improving transportation alternatives to drive alone travel. That's
Okay.
Not terrible.
Commissioner Wilcox.
Well, Erica, previously you had told us that Troutdale would classify for number or qualify for number four whether there are any commercial lots or not.
Correct, so we just we would if we don't have any lots right now that are charging folks for parking, we all we have to do is develop a program that would allow that to occur in the future and it checks that box, we would meet this requirement.
Okay, so all this talk about commercial lots is kind of irrelevant.
Except that it's one of the items we can choose.
Well, they're not a necessary requirement. You just have to say in say on paper that you consider them in the future.
Yeah, we just have to say um within our code that we have a framework for collecting
Revenue.
Revenue from a commercial parking lot.
Personally, I would say the least
Damaging.
Damaging are
Three and four.
Option two, number three and number four.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, me too.
I would agree.
As would I.
I'm
But we don't have to make a decision until next year, right?
Right.
Thanks to the time you bought.
Yeah.
So
Oh, no.
No, you you are correct, we have until June thirtieth of twenty twenty five to adopt new code standards. But I think if we have a consensus from the commission, um I would like to take your
Take it, run.
what you're thinking and uh have a little work session with our city council about it. And then move forward with creating those code update changes. So everybody is informed prior to staff making those code changes. So just making sure we have a good feedback loop between planning commission and city council.
Yeah, I I think those for Troutdale, I'm gonna say those are the two best options that we could that is less problematic for everyone.
Well, none of this is really good.
No, but you have to take you have to take you have to take the more positive of all of them.
But the state's providing us with personal security, okay, I would make this decision.
There's a fundamental problem with what we're doing, right?
Yeah.
We don't have a lot of packed and services close. Not everybody within our society is physically capable of needing these requirements, right?
No.
This is not necessarily a good thing.
But that's why the city sued
And every developer is responsible.
Yeah.
The city of Troutdale joined with other cities to sue the state of Oregon over these Oregon revised statutes. And we lost.
That may be, but
In court.
We still have another election cycle
Well
Yeah, we do.
To make a change.
And that's what the C A C, so we need to bring this information to the C A C, the Citizen Advisory Committee, and the Citizen Advisory Committee needs to publish this out there and get all sixteen thousand seventeen thousand citizens to complain about about this, because what the state is basically saying is, would you rather take cyanide or rat poison?
Too much.
I I never understood why we are planning when the state's doing it all. They just give us a list and say, here, we plan this or there's something there and I and I agree, you're we're in a rock between a rock and a hard place.
Goal one.
I mean and because we're connected to Metro, that includes us, if we were not connected to Metro, we would be in a different situation.
Not too not too not too terribly different, actually.
No.
Yeah, because it's a lot of this is statewide.
Because this is a statewide.
So are you suggesting we start talking about uh seceding into Idaho?
You bet it.
No, 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 that's what I'm saying is that a lot of the mandates that come is usually means met- metropolitan areas. They're focusing more on the metropolitan areas, even though the mandates are for for the rest of the state. Most of the metropolitan areas are the ones they're looking at because that's where the bulk of the people live.
Yeah, and I can see this working for Portland.
Yeah, but it's not working for Troutdale.
But that's a population center that carries the vote, right?
Right.
Even though it doesn't work for us, we're just kind of not really considered.
You think this is bad, those take a place like La Grande or Primeville or somewhere where they're You think this is bad, those, take a place like La Grande or Primeville or somewhere where they're looking at some of this stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And they're like, what?
Huh.
Yeah. Uh, I think all things considered, given how we, I know we all feel about it, um, I thank you for giving us kind of the
Yeah.
walkthrough on some of the better options. I think there is a way to minimally impact things, and I think if we go that route that we all kind of agree on will be in the best shape possible, given our situation itself.
Mm-hmm.
I'm down with that.
Perhaps we should sit on it and consider it for a while.
I will say, um, no parking at the confluence is gonna be a real problem regionally.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
I just want to emphasize that any developer that develops that site will have the option to put in parking.
They will have the option, but, okay?
Right. Self-regulated.
And I, and, and I would think that any good developer that develops that site is gonna put in the parking for the uses on that site.
Sure. Ms. Palmer, I would agree with you, but if that was all the case, we wouldn't be doing any of this.
Okay.
I, I, I know. I.
Right? We wouldn't be mandating things for people.
Well, and, and they mentioned schools in one of these that they don't have to have a mandate for parking.
Where the teachers park.
Yeah, I mean, well, Lori only has enough for the staff, so when they have an event, everybody parks in the neighborhood. So they didn't add any extra parking when they could have added extra parking.
Well, then, then here's the, what I see, right? Developer comes in, some of them are good, some of them are responsible, they wanna see the site do well, and they do a good job, right? But then you get those that come in, they develop it, it looks pretty, it's a shiny penny, businesses come in, that developer sold it, they're out of there. They're off to doing something else. And then you get businesses that are struggling to survive because there's not enough parking for sufficient customers to actually keep them in business.
And and I would say that is true, but then I would also say, let's say you're putting in a business, right? You're developing a site, and all of a sudden you have to break out parking. You have to charge for it separately. You have to have a separate lease for it. You have to have separate standards for it. At some point, you're gonna say, forget this noise.
Right.
I'm either not gonna develop the site, or I'm not gonna put in parking at all, because it's too much more work.
Oh, personally, I stopped putting money into Oregon years ago.
Wasn't there also, I I know a part of this discussion, and maybe this is outside of what we are supposed to decide upon, but that had to do with developers having to install alternative charging stations, basically. And that's now mandated that they have to provide so many EV.
Forty percent.
Forty percent.
Okay, but that's not a part of what we're mandating here or what we can decide upon.
That is part of the, that will be part of the overall code package that comes to you.
So so many, so many spaces have to be, and I I know this is in Portland, too, that at least in most parking lots, at least eight to ten are either hybrid or electric vehicles, and they're closer to the building than handicap.
Sure, because you gotta get those charging stations really.
Well, they're trying to charge, there is no, there is no.
They're really close to the building.
No, but they're no charging station. They're just parking spaces.
Well, they're trying to, they're.
And I'm thinking.
Everything is to push toward making people behave in a certain manner.
I wish they would think logically a little bit. But I know I'm asking the law. I, you, I I I, no, you're the messenger, and I'm sorry.
I thought it was, I think your agent looked higher.
You know what would be a great standard for our elected officials?
If they had to live here.
No. If they actually had to care.
Yeah.
That should be like some type of a mandate, that you have to care about the people that you represent.
Yes, and and part of that ought to be, and the way you you instill that in our elected officials at the state level is that you have them come into Troutdale, that they're mandated to spend a winter, just a week, walking up and down two fifty seven.
I'm old.
Yeah.
Or Boston.
For for half a mile in in the wind and in the ice to get to bus line seventy-seven. Let's require that they do that.
Let's get, let's go on a field trip.
I said the same thing to Sherman, Bob.
Mm-hmm, yeah, anyway.
Very well illustrated, actually. Totally agree with you.
Yeah, well, and it usually, it would make more sense if they would travel through once in a while, just to see what it looks like. I mean, some of these don't even know. People don't even know, they think Troutdale's on another side of it. Uh, we're further down the course, and there really are.
Mm-hmm.
So what I've heard from the commission tonight is that option two fair policies is the better option out of the three options.
Right.
And from the standards that we need to choose from, like the standard three, the flexible, the flexible commute benefits.
Right.
Um, is what the city can consider to move forward with, and also the tax on the parking lot revenue.
Mm-hmm.
And that those two options would probably have the least amount of impacts to Troutdale residents.
Yeah, so I guess we would have to do this in a hearing, and then you said a work session with council. Are you thinking?
Well, some kind of briefing with with council to let them know.
That's what we're, we're considering.
But you probably baked this into twenty twenty-five, right?
Correct, so we wouldn't move forward, we wouldn't have any public hearings until later next spring to adopt any of this. But this is the, this is a substantial code package. It's gonna take staff a couple of months to work with our code and to figure out where everything needs to be placed, and we're gonna have to develop a whole new program um to tax commercial parking lots, and we're gonna have to kind of work through those steps with our finance director and then figure out where that needs to be placed with our code as well.
And I have an idea for a use of the tax on parking lot revenue. It goes to reimburse employers who have to pay fifty dollars a month for their employees that choose alternative.
Yeah, that's a policy, that's a policy decision.
Transportation method.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't say that that is not possible.
That's a policy decision.
I understand. I'm just making a suggestion.
I'm, I'm.
So I guess when you're talking about a work session, but you're talking about a work session after the first of the year when you have a new council.
That's a good, a good question, like, a good thought. I'm gonna have to think about it, but, I, you know, it's.
Just because if we do it with council and then we take the package in in March, that's a different council, and we may have to go back and rewalk the dog again.
Makes sense.
That's a good point.
Just a thought.
Yep.
But that would give you time to do all the.
Yeah.
Have you lifting?
Well, yeah. I mean, as far as, you know, the, how the financial part of it and how that's gonna be structured and the code stuff, that would give you a little more time.
That will, actually.
And you won't be pulling your hair out after a month saying, I only got a month more to go, and.
Yeah.
We would prefer you not to pull your hair out.
Good suggestion.
Okay, Commissioner.
Well, I'm the guy who ride chairs with my wife at a sixty gallon car. I'm used to an electric car. Quite frankly, and to the bus line. Quite frankly, I don't like any of this.
No.
I I don't like it, but we have to minimize.
I like some of the other stuff even less.
Yeah.
That's true, right?
The other stuff.
And it's gonna be an interesting election year.
Yeah, all right, well, that's the, I think that wraps up that conversation for this evening.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your work.
We, we. We appreciate.
We appreciate you.
We, we do appreciate you a lot.
And, and like I said, I, there's, you know, ten businesses out there that I haven't heard from yet, and I will do my best, you know, between now and the next couple of months to try to hear back from them.
Don't, don't eat the messenger, just nibble a bit. With that, on that option two, number three, Joyce, you did wanna mention I ran the numbers on what that would cost an employer. Twenty dollars an hour, that would be about one and a half percent increase in cost, on time cost.
How do you come up with that? You don't mind my asking?
Uh.
Because it's only.
Twenty dollars, twenty dollars an hour times forty hours times fifty-two hours. And break it down by, right into fifty dollars a month.
Well, and, and, okay, but that's all, it's one percent for the one employee that might in that one case.
So it's six hundred. Each, each employee.
What, one.
That uses public transportation.
Essentially, essentially a increase of one and a half percent cost per commuter.
Right.
Per.
For that, for that, for that, for that, for that individual.
Per commuter.
Per, per person.
For that individual.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That individual, if they're commuting every day, a monthly pass is a hundred bucks a month.
Oh, we, yeah.
Unless you're bicycling to work. I I've bicycled to work before. I never got fifty bucks.
There might be a retroactive clause in here somewhere.
Okay.
Okay. Your backup.
Oh, Staff Communications, I am backup. I have a couple of items. Um, last Friday was the city's first Friday event that was outside that we closed down the historic highway for. It, we had excellent weather and excellent turnout. Um, it was actually the second highest June first Friday since, first Fridays we have, first, first Fridays started in twenty twenty-one. Um, and it was the fourth highest overall first Friday um since twenty twenty-one. Um, and the art, the Troutdale Art Festival, too, had pretty high substantial numbers, too, for the weekends. That was great that everybody was out. City, uh, Krista Ann and I were out there in the city booth representing community development and talking to folks about communication. And we had some questions from our CAC committee that we were asking folks, you know, how do they get their um city news? Do they get it from, you know, social media? Do they read the city's newsletter, or uh, are they part of HOA that communicates um with their neighbors? So we got a lot of um good feedback from folks, and we heard the, we are attracting residents from all over the region to our first Friday event, and um we had a, some, some folks from the Netherlands
Oh, how.
um at our booth as well, talking about the city and how much they en- enjoy Troutdale, so that was very nice to hear as well. Um, the Sandy Riverfront Trail Project, that went out to bid this week. And um that bid closes on July eleventh, so I'm really excited about this, because the project should kick off at some point this summer. For that um new park project, so it's called the Sandy River. We have one new pre-application within the department. Um, that pre-application is for the Chinese restaurant, the Chinese food restaurant down on the historic Columbia Highway. Um, right now, that pre-app, they're thinking about um, you know, a restaurant bar use as well as some rental units, about for, no, Taste Village, thank you, yes.
This is Taste Village?
Yeah.
So that may or may not turn into a development application at some point in time for the planning commission to do.
What is going in to the former city hall building? They are remodeling.
That is, that is.
A Wade Days Brewing?
Yep.
Hmm, that's what, okay.
That's the Wade Days Brewing. Um, they've been working on that project, and then also the the brick building right across the street here, that is a migration, no, not migration. Wade Miker Brewing, and they're gonna have Wade Miker Brewing in there, along with some food carts, an ice cream shop, and a a pizza restaurant.
Cool. What is the status of the Home Forward?
The tenement building that's going to transition.
Tenement building. And what can we do to stop it?
So they have all of their building permits, and we ex, I, we expect them to break ground sometime within the next two weeks or by the end of this month.
You know, I, I, you always hear about issues of imminent domain. Cities take over for for highway construction or this or that, and, you know, grab pieces of property, and I just don't understand why there isn't some stronger push, when everyone seems to be opposed to that development.
Everyone, oh, a number of people are opposed to it, but the county purchased the property.
Yes.
From a private park.
And sold it at a market sale price.
To Home Forward. To Home Forward.
Right.
And the use that is going on that property is what the zone property is zoned for, so it goes.
Yeah, that was.
That's it.
Having been there, that was a sketchy deal.
Yeah.
I consider Monomo's revenge.
For what? What did we do to them?
I don't know.
We haven't done it yet, but.
Oh.
I see. There were some things that just happened that just weren't quite right.
And speaking of parking, there was some modification that was going to be quite a few, eighty public parking spaces initially with the proposal, but then I heard that got chopped way down? Do you know what the status is of that?
Eighty-six, right?
I believe that there's eighty, around eighty-five or eighty-six parking spaces for that, for that development.
They're not public parking spaces, they're tenants, parking spaces.
They're tenant spaces.
Which is like sixty percent or something of the number of units?
I think it's one, it's over one point.
Yeah, it's like one point four or something with the street parking.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, they, yeah, and they park on the street as well. That's kind of just part of the parking.
Per unit.
So there's more parking spaces than?
Than units.
Than units?
Yes.
But can't be used for public. Public cannot park there. It's gonna be private property and.
Yeah, the public isn't building it.
Well, the.
Right.
Well, they are, but they aren't.
Half, half of Second Street is public.
It'll be, it's, it's tenant parking.
Yeah.
Tenant parking.
It's tenant parking.
At the north side of Second Street is public.
Yeah.
But I, and I, I never understood why you could designate a public street and have private parking on a public street. That I never understood. Well, if they're using on-street parking as part of their, cause you know they're gonna.
That happens anywhere I can park.
But that's public, and they'll be able to.
No, but they're. They're gonna use it, half of the cul-de-sac, they're de, they're deeming that.
As their.
Their parking.
That's.
I don't, I would have to go back to the site name, it's public parking.
That's public parking.
It's.
They can count it tour words.
I know. This is some deal they struck with the council, actually.
But they, but they.
But they can't, so they could tow a non-resident parked car?
In that cul-de-sac?
On the street?
I couldn't tell you, I mean.
I don't know.
First, you'd have to get an officer to write a ticket, I mean, there's, that could take days.
And there's right across the street, so.
Yeah, I mean, it would be two weeks, I mean, for someone to, I mean, I can say this, cause I've called in a car that's been parked illegal for at least two weeks, and the guy, they came, they tagged it, he took it off, they came and tagged it again, and then they marked it, and then he moved it to another part. And it, and the days, it just, it took him like a month and a half.
Is it red?
No, it was a Cadillac. El Dorado, I know, cause it parked in front of my house.
Well, it's a done deal, I guess.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Everything else good on the Hill?
Everything's excellent on the Hill.
We enjoy you, you know that, don't you?
Thank you, Shirley.
You, you take us, what, you just smile and let us wack, right, and we, it stops.
Okay, Commissioner Allen.
Uh, oh, we've been quite conversant, so I guess I'm good.
I'm also good, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Friggin.
I'm good.
Commissioner Wilcox.
Uh, one thing, we've been looking at use tables often on, and I took a closer look at the general commercial in particular. I noticed fueling stations is permitted outright under general commercial. What I have in mind is, this was done years and years ago, I'm sure. But the Safeway Station across from, uh, what is now Evo Ridge. So you've got residential, commercial immediately adjacent to each other. Would that happen again? Doubt that somebody's ever gonna build another gas station in Troutdale. I mean, could that occur, that, that could occur under the current regulations.
I think it could, but let me take a look at that within the code.
I mean, I, I think it should be, could, should be.
A conditional use.
Conditional.
For fueling in general commercial.
Yeah. There was another one that I questioned, that's, that's permitted outright also. It's described as agricultural or animal-based uses. Not sure what that would be exactly, but I remember several years ago, um, Edgefield requested part of their property be, animals be allowed on. I don't think ever, anything ever came of it, I don't know what, what the zoning was for that particular spot. But I don't think, you know, anybody wants a feedlot across from their house.
Well, I, I had heard for some years that they were gonna do some kind of pig farm, that's not a joke, that's what I heard. There was gonna be some kind of pig farm on the north side of Halsey.
That, that was a pig farm.
That was.
It was a pig farm, that, that is referred to as the pig farm property, when I, when, when I heard, because it was a pig farm.
I see.
The county came in on Edgefield's behalf when they sold him that, and that property north got rezoned so that they could grow crops on it.
Right.
And that's kind of where it stands now.
Nothing, so thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, again, uh, Ms. Palmer went to city council last night and got the, um, Halsey Streets taken care of, uh, so that works all done. And the next project we have now is working on CFEC along with.
Along with the other additional code updates.
That we're doing. Yeah, okay. That's the project base, and.
We're still working on the, the list of, actually what you brought up, the.
The use table?
Use table, we're, cause we haven't completed that.
Yes. No, we wanna get that moving as quickly as possible, the hope was to get it done this month, but we, with, uh, people getting married and all sorts of stuff, it just kind of, um, put us a little behind, but we will get that done, because we need that done, uh, as quickly as possible. So that will be probably on the agenda for July.
Yes, it will be.
All right? And, um, I'd like to thank everybody for being here this evening, and thank you for your participation. And all your work, and with that, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
I second.
Okay, we motion a second to adjourn, all in favor, sitting by, by saying aye?
Aye.
I'm opposed, okay, we adjourn, thank you all very much.
Welcome.